Also, Councilmember Hanford said that he'd be participating this evening remotely. So we will see him come on as a panelist. And as a reminder, Councilmember Hanford is not available this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gamble. Thought I said gamble, my bad, thank you. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Becky, will you please call the roll?
Scarborough, Fisher, Kenny, and Fulcher.
Thank you. And we heard at an earlier meeting that Councilmember Gamble would not be here this evening, so unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Also, Councilmember Hanford indicated that he would be coming in, joining our meeting remotely, so we will note his appearance for the record. I do see that he is in the attendees list right now, so we will bring Councilmember Hanford forward. Also, please let the record show that Councilmember Davis came into, came into chambers right after the roll was read, but at 7:00 PM. And we will wait for Councilmember Hanford to come forward. Okay, we'll give it one more try, and then if we're not able to bring him in now, then we'll bring him in after the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Councilmember Hanford, just confirming that you can hear us. Councilmember Hanford, you're on mute, just confirming you can hear us. Okay, I'm going to, perfect, thank you, sir. We're gonna go ahead and, Councilmember Hanford, just for your information, Councilmember Gamble is not here this evening. He announced he would not be here earlier. There was no objection to excusing his absence, and we are now moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. So Councilmember Fisher, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand. Or if you're in the audience and interested in speaking at this time, please let us know. Okay, there's nobody in the audience expressing that interest, so we will move to the attendees list, and we'll bring forward Sarah Lundstrom. Good evening, Sarah, you're in the panel. Please go ahead and take yourself off mute, and if you'd like to, turn on your video. And then please state your name and either business address or location of residence for the record, and then we'll start the three minutes.
Sure, I'm Sarah Lundstrom, and I live in the Frylands.
All right, thank you very much, go ahead.
Um, so, as many of you know, representing the next step, our local family resource center, and I just wanted to keep on the forefront of your radar, some of the really exciting things we've been doing. And with our ARP funds, after hearing from some local Hispanic families about their needs, we've been working with a Seattle-based nonprofit called Ventures to help local families start their own small businesses. And this is a series of classes we're doing in Spanish, and it's been really well attended, and the classes are going really awesome, so we're excited about that. We've also been able to work with another one of our partners who provides our in-house family lawyer, Snohomish County Legal Services, to provide a series of legal clinics in the housing and family law realm, and so far, they have built up really quickly, and it's, I think that for the most part, he's, that lawyer so far has been seeing women, domestic violence and eviction issues, things like that. And another thing we've been doing that's really exciting with our ARP funds is to expand mental health services in our school district. As we know, Compass Health closed at the beginning of our pandemic and left around 170 students in our district high and dry kind of for mental health services. And so we've been working with some local providers and with the school district, and we were able to refer 16 students to services, and we're super excited. We got our second round of funds to continue this program, and in the fall, our providers are pulling in us quite a few interns, and so the amount of referrals we'll be able to take will really increase, and we'll be able to get some students getting help. Many of these students come from the high school as referrals, and many of these students were unable to seek services with their parents, and they are at the age of consent where they can seek the services on their own, and so these were students who really weren't going to be seeking or be able to access services without this program and these funds. So, 25 seconds left, just some of the exciting things we've been able to do with our ARP funds, and so many things that have been expanding, and just a lot of exciting stuff coming up, and so I wanted to keep it on your radar, thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to the city council this evening? If so, please raise your hand if you're in the attendees list. By raising your hand in the middle of your screen, we're hitting star nine if you are on the phone. All right, saying none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and we'll move Sarah back to the attendees list. Thank you again, Sarah. The next item that we have on our list this evening, on our agenda this evening, is item 5.1. This is a presentation of the state, state of, the state of the Evergreen Health Monroe, and I'm going to acknowledge first Ms. Knight, Deborah.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have two individuals. We have Lisa LaPlante, who is the Detective Director with Evergreen Health Monroe, and Megan Mersing, who is the Director of Nursing. And they are going to be sharing with the council today some of the work that is happening and some of the changes that are going on at the hospital, lots of exciting things. And we are very pleased to have a presentation from both of them today. I want to say also, just before we let Lisa step up to the podium and start to talk, just how much we really appreciate the partnership with Evergreen Health Monroe. It's been fabulous working with them, and they are sharing some stories this evening of how they've been using some of the funds that they have been provided through the city's ARPA application. So, welcome, Lisa, it's great to have you here with us today.
Thank you all for having me today. I, for those of you that I don't know, I am the Chief Administrative Officer. I have been with the hospital since 2010. So I have seen a lot of changes in that time, and I live here in Monroe. So love Monroe, love our hospital, and love all the work that you all are doing. So with that, I'm just gonna give a really high-level update on the hospital, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Megan to go through some patient stories about the ARPA funds that we have received through the recovery center and a couple of other things. So, next slide, please. So again, history, I'll give a brief history. Our districts and our governance, go over that really briefly. System integration, our core hospital services, our recovery center, inpatient behavioral health, that's soon to come. And then, as I said, the ARPA funding update, next slide. So, history of the hospital, so 1949, Monroe General Hospital opened here in Monroe. It was actually in the blue old building on Main Street. I have it on a little tile on my desk, it's really cool. In 1960, formed as a public hospital district. The name changed in 1961 to Valley General. 1973, I thought it was 72, 73, we opened the Recovery Center. So that's our 40-bed alcohol and chemical dependency unit. That also includes 10 detox beds. And then March 1st of 2015 was our alliance with Evergreen Health. We're both two separate public hospital districts, but we work really closely together as a system, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Next slide. So this just shows our district, so Evergreen Health is a public hospital district as we are, and you can see neighboring districts. I like to say, our district here, Snohomish County, is actually bigger than the state I grew up in, in Rhode Island. So that's pretty cool. And it's growing, right? We know this district is growing big time. So anyway, we want to prepare for our community in the future. Next slide. Just, I just wanted to show our governance. So prior to the alliance, we have our commissioners, so five elected officials. Kirkland has seven elected officials. What we did is we took two from Kirkland, two from Snohomish, and then the CEO of Kirkland is our Alliance Governance Board. So in Monroe, we are fortunate enough to have two board meetings every month. And you can come to any, they're all public, so. Next slide. System integration, in the past two years, even with all of COVID going on, we've worked on system integration a lot. It benefits a hospital like Monroe, being the size we are, to be in an alliance with Kirkland. They have a lot more services than we do, a lot more bench strength, more staff physicians to pull from than we do. So these partnerships are really important. So we have shared leadership, so we have local and system leaders. We have our primary care here in Sultan and Monroe that continue to grow, and those are ran by Evergreen Health Kirkland. And we're growing our specialty practice plan, so we want to bring more specialists. We just signed with cardiology to do call coverage, hopefully bring out outpatient services and hopefully inpatient eventually. But urology, hand surgery, orthopedic, and general surgeons, as well as infectious disease. Our urgent care that opened April 4th is doing amazing, seeing around, going up to about 30 patients in a day. So, great experience, it's open seven days a week, it's on the second floor of the medical office building right there in the hospital parking lot, and is really doing well. Staffing continues to be a challenge for us, but working along with Kirkland, again, they have a much larger staff that we can pull from. So we're trying to work with our unions so that we can work together and have coverage. There's certain departments in the hospital that, like respiratory therapy, you only have one on at a time. And if you have one call out sick and you can't get that coverage, it really puts us in a bind. So having a partner like Kirkland that we can tap into is really huge for our small organization. And then really big electronic medical record, we're going to Epic October 1st. So as a system, Epic is just the best, the Cadillac of all systems, and right now, we're kind of in a black hole. And we've actually had a lot of patient complaints that you could be at Kirkland and you can't see your records in Monroe. Never mind being at Prove or anywhere else. So October 1st, we will be on the system, and it's going to be a big, big improvement for our organization. Next slide, I believe I'm gonna turn it over to Megan. This is Megan, our Chief Nurse Officer.
Thanks, Lisa. So I'm also resident of Monroe, for those of you that I don't know, happy to be here, thanks for having us tonight. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our hospital services. So we are licensed for 112 beds. 72 of those are acute care beds, 40 are the detox center, recovery center across the street from us, we'll talk a little bit more about that. We have a 24/7 hospitalist group that manages all of our medical patients. We're Level 4 trauma, which just designates the types of trauma patients that we can accept and take care of through our hospital service. Actually see quite a bit of trauma patients being located out there where we are, off Highway 2, lots of people come and recreate out here, traveling up through the mountains, and so our teams are really quite good at stabilizing trauma patients. We see quite, quite a few of those. Inpatient outpatient surgery, we have an accredited lab, something we're really proud of, that I don't think we got to boast too much about because COVID hit. Right when we got this was some state-of-the-art diagnostic equipment, so CT and MRI. We were planning a nice open house to have people from the public come in, and then COVID hit, and we weren't able to do that. But prior to that, our MRI equipment actually was housed across the parking lot in our medical office building, making it really challenging when we had to take patients back and forth across that parking lot in ducky weather sometimes. So really fortunate to have that right there within the hospital now. We have rehab services, so physical therapy, speech, occupational. We have a wound care clinic with hyperbaric oxygen chambers, which is pretty unique to have at such a small facility out here in Monroe. An anticoagulation clinic, and then a pain clinic as well. Next slide, please. So to talk a little bit more about our Recovery Center, as Lisa mentioned, it opened actually in 1973. Yep, sorry, we'll have to update that slide. It does have a 10-bed inpatient detox as one side of the, one of the units, and then the other side of the building is our 21-day stay residential area, and so those are really two separate and unique, distinct places for care at our Recovery Center when patients come in. We offer outpatient services. There is a treatment group with patient family counselor support, and then we have a really large alumni support group as well. When you think about the impactful care that these patients, when they go through these services, they really want to give back to other patients that are going through it as well, and so we tap into them quite a bit, and it's fulfilling, I think, in many ways. Next slide, please. So as Lisa mentioned, we're really excited to talk about, we are planning for a new inpatient 90- and 180-day civil commitment unit to really expand upon our behavioral health needs that are growing within not only our community, but nationally, globally. Even more so as we've seen effects of the pandemic, and so, bless you. We are very fortunate to say that we received funding through a behavioral health grant through the state, and then the rest of our funding will come through direct appropriation through capital funding. We have a group already working on this, really excited for what it's gonna hopefully bring for our community members that need this care pretty desperately. And then it is gonna require some, some mild renovation of our facility, looking to do that where our prior OB unit was housed and expanding upon that. And looking to have patients there actually by the end of next year, if we're lucky, or beginning of 2024. So plans are underway for that. Next slide, please. So the, the really fun and exciting stuff, want to share with you, ARPA funding. So several areas here where we were fortunate enough to receive funding. One was, again, our recovery services, $66,000. This has gone to help fund our scholarship beds that we'll talk a little bit more about. It's been a really, really great community-driven partnership, and we, you'll see in a little bit here, just some of the great comments from not only how the patients have gone through, but how our staff have perceived it. We also received funding over $111,000 to help offset our Recovery Center lease, which really struggled when COVID hit. We actually had to close that facility for a couple of months when we couldn't keep patients coming through, and it was really incredibly impactful. So that's been fantastic. Hospital beds that are gonna help support our inpatient progressive care unit, which is actually a brand-new unit. We opened in the end of February this year. It helps to take care of step-down ICU patients, and so it provides that level of care between ICU and like a typical med search floor. Really excited about the level of care we've been able to bring to our community members through that. And then lastly, our social worker salary. Again, these funds will be used to really help to bring increased services for mental health, behavioral health patients through a hospital. Next slide. So a little bit more about our scholarship program, oh boy, that is tiny. That's really hard to read. I apologize, I'm not sure I can, can quite go off of that, but I'll talk with you just a little bit more about it. So again, we've been really fortunate to work with the city through this, through our funding, and really looking to find folks that need our services, are in dire need of it, and working with our Resource Officer to help identify those individuals and help get them into the program. Anything I'm leaving out? Very well. Okay, thank you, next slide, please. So, a couple of patient stories, hard to see here as well, but really, I think that the important thing is that we've had two successful patients go through. One is a 28-year-old male, the other is a 21-year-old female. Both were homeless, both were really struggling, did not have access to services, didn't even really know how to go about to get access to those services, and multiple areas of trauma within their life and behavioral health concerns. And so really just needing support, and through this funding, we've been able to bring both of these patients into the program. They didn't have any access to healthcare. I mean, we're talking like, truly, you know, on the streets with, with nothing. Substance use disorders, and really a lack of any kind of outreach or ability to access those things. This one particular patient, the 28-year-old male, his primary motivation recovery was not himself, it was his daughter. You know, he had mentioned to our staff that if not for her, he did not want to be here on this earth any longer, but fortunately, he had that motivation and was able to get within the program. He was able to be stabilized on a drug called Zoboxone, which is part of our medication assisted treatment program. He's now successfully through the program, has been connected with Recovery Support Services on an outpatient basis, was able to find stable housing. So really proud of that. Next slide. And then, as I mentioned, 21-year-old female, very similar story in terms of coming off the street homeless. She was really feeling like she needed to be in control of her life, and so fortunately, was found at a time when it was ripe for action, she was ready to take and make change in her life. She has been stabilized back on her mental health medications, which she had not been able to have for quite some time. She has obtained sober housing over in Wenatchee. She's connected with a 12-step community program, has a sponsor, and again, has some recommendations for ongoing care, but we've been able to stabilize that situation for that individual as well. Next slide, please. Lastly, just want to share what it's, how it's been impactful to our team members. So this is just a couple of quotes from a couple of counselors that work with these patients, as well as one of our nurses. And I think the things I'll, I'll pull out here, which are bolded, which is, they leave with a sense of hope and self-worth. They feel as worthy as anyone to have a life that is good by their own standards. And these patients are appreciative, and the scholarship program is a benefit to the community. So, you know, not only are patients are within our community getting access to this and having life-changing, I mean, think about that, life-changing things that are happening for them, but our staff are part of it too, and really seeing that evolution and change for them. So it's been incredibly impactful. So, next slide. That wraps up what we have for you. Are there any questions that Lisa and I can answer?
Thank you very much, Megan. Thank you very much, Lisa. Are there any questions for Evergreen Health Monroe this evening? Any comments? All right, thank you very much. I, before you leave, I think we all recognize, I, I know we all recognize the value that you bring to our community. I know that one of the big problems we have across our nation is that areas that are more rural lack medical facilities. And having the hospital district here is, is really important. I mean, it's one of the reasons why we publicly fund roads and schools and hospital districts is to make certain we have services when we're in need. I appreciate the partnership with Evergreen Health. That's, that brings some real horsepower to today's world and today's marketplace to make certain we have a hospital out here. So I do appreciate all the work you're doing. I know it's been challenging recruiting people here, and to the extent that we can be part of helping with that, please reach out to us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That next item would be the Consent Agenda, and I turn to council. Somebody want it? Okay, Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as provided in the packet.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Fulcher to approve the Consent Agenda. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll move to vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Councilmember Hanford, I didn't see you come off mute. I understand that you have voted in the affirmative. If that's not the case, please let me, please let me know. So motion passes 6-0, thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, item number 78.1. On my copy, we'll call it 7.1, and I turn to Deborah Knight, Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. The issue in front of the council this evening is the notice of intention to commence annexation, and this is what is titled "The Initial Meeting." Council previously discussed this annexation on June 14th and June 28th. The motion that we're asking for this evening is to direct staff to prepare and return to the city council's consideration a resolution accepting the annexation boundary of the 10% annexation petition for approximately 41.69 acres located north of 126 Place Southeast and to the east of the Monroe Woodlands Annexation. So what's in front of you this evening is the 10% annexation, and what we're wanting to do is to have council direct staff to move that forward to the 60%. So the proposed annexation area is designated on the future land use map as medium-density, single-family residential at seven units per acre. The direct petition method is being used to process the citizen-initiated annexation request. During the, this initial meeting, the city council can accept the boundaries, reject the boundary, or modify the annexation boundary. So you have three alternatives. There is a list of factors available in the Agenda Bill the city council may want to consider in making its decision this evening. Council's action this evening is the first step in a much longer process. Direction to prepare a resolution accepting the annexation boundary of the 10% annexation petition will allow the initiating parties to circulate a separate petition that must be signed by the owners of at least 60% of the value of the property located in the annexation area. Unlike the 10% petition that's in front of you this evening, the 60% petition is jurisdictional and must contain the form and content requirements prescribed by statute. If the initiating parties successfully submit the signed 60% petition to the city, the city council will have additional opportunities prescribed by state law to take public comment and consider annexing all or any portion of the proposed annexation area and establishing zoning regulations. So as mentioned at the beginning, this isn't the last step, this is the very first step. So, next slide. That is the motion that is in front of you this evening regarding the 10% annexation. I know that our city attorney Zach Lal is on the line. Mr. Lal, is there anything else you would like to add?
Evening, council. No, Ms. Knight accurately summarized the statutory framework for this particular annexation and the stage in the process that's before the council this evening. I'd be happy to answer any legal questions that the council may have, but again, Ms. Knight, I think accurately summarized everything today.
All right. Anything further, Deborah?
Nothing for me, thank you, Mayor.
All right, councilmembers, do you have any questions or a motion? Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
I move to direct staff to prepare and return for the city council's consideration a resolution accepting the annexation boundary of the 10% annexation petition for property located in an unincorporated area in the northwest urban growth area, and to require the assumption of existing indebtedness of the city by the area to be annexed. To authorize the circulation of a petition for annexation of the property subject to the zone designation set forth in Ordinance Number 0182019, and consistent with this motion, and lastly, to direct the city clerk to record this action in the official minutes.
I have a motion from Councilmember Fulcher, a second from Councilmember Davis, for the requested action is shown on the screen, 7.1. I was gonna say urban, unfinished, unfinished business, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, council will move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that one would be new business. Item 8.1, Resolution Number 2022010, Updating Cost Allocation Plan, and I understand that Greg Pillard, our finance manager, will be presenting. Greg, go ahead.
Before you tonight, on page 533, is the Agenda Bill and the Resolution 2022010 for your consideration. Before you tonight, on page five thirty-three, is the agenda bill and the resolution twenty-two-two-zero-one-zero for your consideration. And what this is doing is this is updating our cost allocation plan to what our current practice is right now. So the cost allocation is the overhead that's charged to things like our utilities. It goes back into the general fund for things that the general fund does, like HR and payroll things along those lines. This first started in two thousand and twelve, and what our process was in two thousand and twelve is we would estimate the overhead for the year. And then in January, we would true it up and we would do the budget adjustment in January. Based on feedback from the state auditor's office in two thousand and fourteen, we changed this to do an actual true two-year look back. And so that adjustment in January is no longer needed. One of the exit recommendations from the state auditor's office after our twenty-two. A review by the state auditors and the audit itself was to remove that language that's still in the policy right now. So it still says that we'll do an adjustment at the end of the year or in January to true up those actual costs. But now that we do that actual true two-year look back, we don't need to do any adjustment of costs. So really, this is just an update to what the current practice is. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that will conclude my report and happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Greg. Turning to counsel, any questions or a motion? Council member Kenny, go ahead.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two-two dash zero-one-zero, amending the cost allocation plan for internet fees. Interfund.
Have a motion from council member Kenny, a second from council member Davis for the requested action in new business item number eight point one, as shown on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, council move to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to council member reports, and we will start off on the end there with council member Scarborough. Any report this evening?
Is my mic on?
Yes, sir.
Just that we all had, it seems like we had a pretty safe Fourth of July weekend. I did drive out to the Lake Ty area. Not at night, but during the afternoon. And there wasn't a whole lot of activity there, but there was a fair amount. Maybe it increased after four or five o'clock. I don't know. But I don't, I don't hear any reports that we burned up the artificial turf or anything. So I'm, I'm glad to hear or not hear that. So. It looks like everything went well and it was as usual. It's, it's a great time, but it's hard on the animals. And thank goodness for tranquilizers, I guess, but that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, council member Scarborough. Council member Fisher, go ahead.
I, the only other report is we're out in the park for the music and it was great. Great to see all the people out there and having fun and people getting back together with the ever this whole COVID thing. So look forward to more of those. And yeah, it's a shout out to parks and putting all that stuff together and commerce. And yeah, it was a great time. So thank you.
Thank you. Turning to the screen, council member Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Council member Fisher, my older daughter was able to attend the part, music in the park. Unfortunately, I was unable to, but it sounds like it was an amazing time and we've had some great weather. So hoping to get out there and enjoy that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hanford. Council member Kenny, go ahead.
For me, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Folcher, go ahead.
I was also there at the music in the park the last two Fridays. Really good job there, Mr. Farrell. Not that you were on stage, but your crew did an amazing job. Especially the, the opening ones. I'm really looking forward to the next few. Other than that, it's just been a really busy couple of weeks, but nothing that was directly city-related. So that's it.
Thank you, council member Folcher. Council member Davis, go ahead.
Nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. We're going to turn to staff now with a report from Jordan Otto under ten point one with the Public Works Department, twenty-two report. Jordan, go ahead. Good evening.
Okay, thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so just to, excuse me, two projects to just update the council on tonight. The first one is our municipal campus project. Just our, our update is that it is progressing on schedule. The architectural schematic design documents will be revealed in detail to the city council at a regular study session in, in early August. So at this time, the key progress indicators that can be seen around the campus are utility located markings, geotechnical engineering test pits for soil testing. And a property and topographical survey stake markers. So currently, staff assigned to the project team consists of at least one representative from each department within the city. And the committee is currently reviewing and providing comments regarding the design as it pertains to departmental adjacencies, access to customer service areas. Storage needs and various other functional requirements. And if you can see in your packet, there is, there is the first conceptual exterior sketch provided by the architect. And again, that's just a conceptual. It's, it's yet to probably change at some point, but that's kind of what where we're at and what it's starting to look like. So we'll have right more details on the project for you in, in early August. And then the second project that I wanted to bring the council's attention tonight was the start. The construction of the North Madison project expected to begin on July eighteenth. And completion was expected mid to late fall of this year. And when complete, the project will remove the stormwater runoff from entering the sanitary sewer system by collecting, treating and infiltrating that runoff. Replacing a four-inch wa- AC water main process North Madison at Short Columbia. And reconstruction of the streetscape to achieve ADA compliance and integrate complete street elements, including traffic calming curb. Bulb outs, ADA ramps, marked crosswalks near the school. And the elimination of the excessive, the excessive crown in the roadway. So that concludes the report for July. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those. Otherwise, that's all I have for you guys tonight. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much, Jordan. Does anybody have any questions for Jordan? And one moment, please. Council member Scarborough does. One moment, please. Just there you go.
Good evening. Thanks for the report. Looks like number four, I was, I thought we had in previous presentations that that was going to be done by the end of July before the fair open this year, or am I a year off?
Oh, down on the bottom. Is that the trail?
The walkway between, the walkway on Highway two next to the fairgrounds.
Right. Yes, I believe that is still on schedule to be done before the fair starts. And if I'm not mistaken, that project is starting very soon. I might need to get back to you on an exact start date, but I believe that project is starting, is starting soon, and it should be completed before the fair.
Okay, thank you. That's going to go pretty quickly. I appreciate that. Thank you, Jordan. And Kirk, council member Scarborough, thank you for asking the question. Any other questions for Jordan? All right. Thank you very much, Jordan. We're going to go ahead and move on to the Parks Department report for June twenty-two. This is item ten point two on your agendas, and I turn to, to our director, Mr. Farrell. Mike, go ahead. Oh, yeah, right. Tonight, you're Lance. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening, council members. You have before you the department report for last month for June. Just things to point out. Really is nice that the crew had a chance to get up to Trombley Park and, and get that maintained. Get some field mowing done there. And so basically, you know, folks can access the park there. And the Monroe Park Board, June meeting was canceled. However, this next meeting that will be this month on the twenty-first, it will include park tours at Blueberry Park and Trombley Park. There's also information about Trombley Park, and I believe I had updated the council last month about staff applying for to RCO grants to help toward funding, designing, and eventual construction of that park. And then there were June events in our parks that were noteworthy, the Pride event. You can see photos and in a recap of that successful event celebration and as well as the Juneteenth celebration at Sky River Park. The city's presence ongoing at the Monroe Farmers Market each week. I was there, I think it was the last Wednesday or a week ago, something like that. It's amazing event, and I know other departments is, including the police department, are also are attending the event and, you know, providing a booth and, and making contact with, with our residents. I also want to point out the Legends Baseball, the Casey Edelbrock Memorial Tournament that occurred last, last month. And, and I have to say, I'm especially proud of our park staff. They really worked hard because the, the weather was a challenge because as what, we had the all-weather, the synthetic turf fields, and they went off okay, of course. As, as they're designed to be, but the natural grass and dirt fields there, they spent a lot of work and a lot of time to get as many of those fields to work. For, for folks, we did have some rainouts there. But anyways, again, very, very proud of the, the efforts that our staff put in to the park. Two things outside of that attached report I want to point out is we're mentioning about the music concerts are, are going each Friday in July. With the exception of this Friday, the Tri-Monroe event is this Friday, so there won't be a music concert this Friday. And then the last thing I want to mention is regarding the fourth, that I want to give special thanks to Chief Jolly and also Deputy Chief Irving. They watched the park from approximately dusk until they were there till two thirty AM, and the park was very active. And they prevented several instances of attempted fireworks discharges in the park. So the, the, yes, the fields are, they, they made it out okay, but it was, it was due to their efforts. So anyways, I just wanted to thank the chief. And that concludes our report.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for, for Mike? And I turn to. Yeah, just a second. Who's got Jacob? Oh, for your next one? Okay. All right, Kirk, go ahead.
Yeah, under unmarked trails inspection, under locations, you haven't put the location, you just put the date, hours, and trash collected. Didn't we used to know which areas this trash and hours were spent on in your previous reports?
I, I believe you may be correct, and I will look into that and we will edit that, make the change there if as possible. Because yes, that does not say which locations they were, whether it was Sky River or Alborla.
Know where they are.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, council member Scarborough? All right. Thank you. Any other questions for, for Mike? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the Economic Development, June twenty-two report with Rich Hebner. So Rich, you are Jacob this evening. Go ahead.
I could think of a lot worse people to be compared to. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, sir. Good evening, council members. Unlike my esteemed colleague, Mr. Farrell, I most decidedly cannot sing, so I'll give you an oral report this evening. The Economic Development Report for June twenty-two is in your packet. Just a couple of highlights for you this evening. The Economic Development Advisory Board met on June twenty-third. We were joined by our city engineer, Mr. Peterson, who gave an update for the board on the future steps of the gateway and wayfinding signage, phased installation plan. We're all very familiar with their work on the two gateway signs. They will be also installing forty-four wayfinding signs, including those specifically designed by our consultant for the downtown area. Those will be installed later this year and an additional forty-two signs next year. So that was the update from Mr. Peterson. That project is moving along as scheduled and as budgeted. The, just friendly reminder, the EDAB will be joining you all for your study session next week, July nineteenth, for a joint meeting to discuss twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four budget priorities. As Mr. Farrell alluded to in his report, busy month for events here in Monroe. Mr. Farrell mentioned the Tri-Monroe that's taking place this weekend. We've been discussing music in the park a few times this evening. That's been going great. The Monroe Farmers Market, of course, is ongoing. And the Evergreen Speedway Summer Showdown, Mr. Pylon, remind me, June twenty-second, twenty-third?
July twenty-second.
Thank you, July. I'm, I'm doing the June report. So that's in my, in my head, July twenty-second and twenty-third. And the Evergreen State Fair Park will be hosting their annual fair food drive this month as well. And of course, a big reminder, everyone familiar, National Night Out will be held on August second, which will take place before my next report. So getting a plug in for that event as well. And then just wanted to bring to your attention, there is a new program through Washington State. It's called the Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy and Resilience, also known as the C-Pacer Program. And what this program does, it's similar to a traditional loan, but it allows Snohomish County to to levy a voluntary assessment against, against properties in order to provide property owners with funds to implement energy improvements to their facilities. So eligible upgrades include reducing energy demand and replacing non-renewable energy with renewable energy sources. Seismic upgrades to meet state and regional guidelines, reducing stormwater or pollution. And wildfire flooding and/or natural or human-caused disaster mitigation. So that's a new program available through the state for property owners. The Snohomish County will be hosting a stakeholder meeting in the last week of July. There's an online poll currently active to select the date for that meeting. So if, if you know through your networks, any property owners that may be interested in doing some upgrades to their facilities related to clean energy or upgrades for reducing their, their footprint or preparing for natural disasters. That's an opportunity, and we're happy to provide any information that we can or references to Snohomish County or the state for that program. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions from council.
All right. Thank you very much, Rich. Any questions for Mr. Hebner? All right, saying none. Thank you very much, Rich. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item. This one would be the Human Services, June twenty-two work report with Deborah Knight. Deborah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of highlights of last month's report. The city council had set aside a hundred thousand dollars in the general fund budget to support human services focused around mental and behavioral health, affordable housing, and disability services. We did a competitive grant process for that, received three applications. Those applications were reviewed by a small group of Community Human Service Advisory Board members. Out of the three applications, the board is recommending that one application to the YMCA be funded. So we will be bringing that forward to council in the next couple of weeks for action. The Recovery Roadshow was held by the Office of Recovery, the Snohomish County Office of Recovery on June ninth. I know a number of individuals from the city of Monroe attended that meeting. We had a follow-up meeting this morning with members of the Snohomish County staff and our own service providers. There were about twenty-five service providers on the call this morning, providing some additional information to the Office of Recovery about priorities in the Sky Valley and the Monroe community. The last item I wanted to share with council is that we are starting to collect stories from awardees of American Rescue Plan Act funds and how they are using those funds to help Monroe residents. So you got a sample of some of those stories today during the presentation by staff members from the Evergreen Health Monroe. So we'll be continuing to share those stories on Monroe this week, our social media sites, and on our website. So just trying to let members of the public know how the city has been using its funds. So that's all for me, Mayor, and I am available to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. There any questions on the Human Services report? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the mayor and administrative reports. We'll start off with item eleven point one, City Administrative Report Extended Agenda. Deborah?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple items then for the extended agenda, moving on to next Tuesday's meeting on July nineteenth. We will be having a Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting. And starting to lay some of the groundwork for budget discussions with the Finance Committee and the council in the coming months. So there will be a review and discussion of the contingency fund, the budget base needs versus other programs, and bank capacity. We will also be giving an update then on the Human Services competitive process. Annually, we get requests from human service providers such as the Monroe Senior Center. And so looking to discuss with council just how we can potentially move those into a, a more competitive process. The items that we have then scheduled for the regular study session is, as Mr. Heebner mentioned, the joint meeting with the Economic Development Advisory Board. So like the joint meeting with the Community Human Services Advisory Board, there are some specific questions around the survey that the board is looking for council input on, and then a discussion of the board's strategic priorities that they would like to share with city council during that meeting. Looking forward then to Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, and the council's regular meeting, we will have a P-three committee meeting. And we will be discussing with the committee members the Transportation and Utility Comprehensive Plan Updates, the Draft Capital Facilities Plan, and then just a general comprehensive plan update from our Community Development Director Lance Bailey. We're having a kickoff meeting on the comprehensive plan this week, and so we will beginning, we will be getting to roll out regular updates to the city council in coming months. Looking then at the regular business meeting, we have a couple of proclamations, one for National Night Out, and then one for Purple Heart Day. Just a few regular consent agenda items that you see each week. And then under New Business, we will have the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointments, a resolution to extend the work that the Economic Development Advisory Board is doing. If you recall, that was created by resolution and expires in two thousand and twenty-two at the end of the year. A Solid Waste Advisory Committee Appointments, that was something that Councilmember Gamble had asked staff to bring, Mayor and staff to bring back. And then finally, just the regular reports and then an executive session on the pricing of property and potential litigation.
All right. Thank you very much. Any, any questions from council about the extended agenda or any notes on absences? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the city administrators. Sorry, I missed that. You must have both, both popped in at the same time after I looked away. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Fisher or Kenny?
Huh?
Okay. I had a question about our meeting on the twenty-sixth of July. And under reports, it says fireworks update. I was just wondering, being a new council member, if that will be a report on a lot of the communication we've received from the community about the fireworks situation.
No. So typically, it is a report on the activities that impacted staffing and resources, so not specific to any communications between staff and community members.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Yeah, I will be absent on the twenty-sixth for P-three and council with no coverage.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other items of note on the extended agenda from the council? All right. We're going to go ahead and move then on to, I'm going to double check, make sure I'm not missing something that just went on. We're going to move on to the City Administrator Report. Deborah?
So for the City Administrators Report, just a reminder that your August second, two thousand and twenty-two committee and council meetings are canceled to celebrate National Night Out. We did already previously talk about the fireworks update from staff on July twenty-sixth. And then just a reminder, if council hasn't seen our state representatives from the twelfth Legislative District who will be representing Monroe, will be in Monroe on Thursday, July twenty-first from nine to eleven AM, and that will be held at the Monroe Coffee Company. Also, I just wanted to let council know that Jordan Otto had previously reported that the path, the US two path would be completed by the by the fair, but that won't be the case. That project has been delayed actually by WSDOT review. And so there isn't a date yet as to when that project will start or finish. So apologies for that previously, a previous report, and there will be more information coming to council tomorrow.
Kirk, can you hit your, just let me get your mic. And then can you speak into the mic again, please?
Yeah, what, what was canceled in August? What date?
Oh, the August second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, so the first study session of August is canceled for National Night Out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other, any other questions? Deborah, I'm sorry, did you have anything further?
I don't.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions from council members? All right, just Mayor's report, couple items. One, right now, I'm working with the FW here locally about raising a Purple Heart flag here at here at the campus on or close to Purple Heart Day. Purple Heart Day is August seventh, and so that is a Sunday. We're looking at doing this either on a Friday, Saturday, or on the Sunday. It will be up at least over the weekend of August seventh, if not for the, for that week. This will be the first year that we are commemorating Purple Heart Day. As you recall, all of us signed on to a statement declaring our city is a Purple Heart City last year on Pearl Harbor Day. And so there, there is a flag that we're able to, to fly and honor and commemorate that. And so we're, we're working on that right now. As soon as I have more information, I'll let you know, but just kind of look at your calendars. It'll probably be in the afternoon of Friday the fifth or sometime on Saturday or Sunday, the sixth or the seventh. All right. The other thing, just to share with folks, as you're aware, we had a number of incidents at the Monroe School District last year around graffiti in town and some other issues that resulted in different things happening at, at some of our schools. And one of the things, and then we also had issues nationally occur in different schools where law, you know, where students' lives were lost. One of the things that is important to me is to, to know what it is that I can do and that we can do as a city to help with messaging around safety in the schools and also issues around inclusiveness and, and making certain that people understand that that you, we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't be condoning or having graffiti on our schools and things like that that are hateful in nature and so on. So the Snohomish School District is working on some sort of program and effort for next year. I've been in communication with Monroe School District about trying to do something similar or in coordination with the Snohomish School District. And so just sharing with the council that we're looking into things we can do to help out with messaging as we're moving into the school year, everything from as I was discussing around inclusiveness, but also for students and families who are in crisis, different places that you can go to to get help rather than looking at settling your, the issues you're having by resorting to violence and things along those lines. So as we, as I get more information on that, I will reach out to you, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. I think it forwarded to you a number of or a couple of emails around fireworks. You've received those. As you can see, we've been following up on some of those. There was a question as to how many staff hours were spent. And I have asked the staff to not only take that roughly thirty hours or forty hours, you know, in terms of hours, but also to convert that to cost. And so you'll be getting that update, just as Deborah pointed out. We do this update every year, a couple of weeks after Fourth of July, because that's about how long it takes to get the information from the fire district, compile it with Public Works and police calls for service and so on. So we will have that information to share with you at the end of the month. And I think that's all that I have to report. Does anybody have any questions or concerns for me? All right. And the owls are powered up, which means we do have a need for an executive session. Since they're red, it's going to be at least until tomorrow morning. That is a joke. There is no further business this evening unless there's objection. We are adjourned. No objection, we are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Kevin.